Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from Staffing Stewards. The Assembly Point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
I'll now ask all the members to introduce themselves. So I'll introduce myself first. I'm councillor Alan Woodcock, representing East Ecclesham Ward.
Councillor Tony Downing, Member for Mosbury Ward.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle.
Nigat Bhishara, councillor for Netherbridge and Sherrill.
Mark Whitaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Nikki Bellfield, councillor for Firth Park.
Mia Dragic, councillor for Park and Abathon.
Councillor Gary Wetherell, Shay Green of Ryside.
Douglas Johnson, City Ward, and I'm substituting for councillor Elliot.
Henry Notte, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Denise Chapman, councillor for Mosbury Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood Ward.
Richard Williams, Member for Stannington Board.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies, Chair?
Yes, we've got apologies from Mike Chaplin, who councillor Moynihan's substituting for, Marion Elliott, who as Douglas said, he's substituting for, and Janet Riddler, who Mia Dragic is substituting for.
Do we have any items we need to actually press up on it? No one else on there? Does any member have a declaration of interest to make? Makes the previous meeting, page 11 probably. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. Page 15. I'll take that as a... Yeah, correct. Thank you. Site visits will be put into members' diaries as and when needed. And we have various orders today. The first item, item 7, tree preservation order number 47715 to 15 Woodvale Road. Vanessa, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Lyons. I'm the tree officer that deals with planning issues at Sheffield City Council. I'm here seeking confirmation of TPO 477, which was made on the 14th of March 2024, to protect a group consisting of five mature lime trees at 15 Woodvale Road. And you can see a copy of the order with its accompanying map at Appendix A in the report. Situated in the Encliff Conservation Area, the trees are protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990. Section 211 requires that a person intending to carry out works to a tree in a conservation area must provide the council with notice of their intention to do so. On the 30th of January, the trees were subject to a Section 211 notice, seeking to repollard the five mature trees. The notice was submitted by a tree surgeon, acting as agent for owner of the trees. A site visit was conducted by myself. The trees are a mature group. They have previously been pollarded or topped, but they've regrown large upright canopies. And it's my estimation that the previous pollarding or topping was done many years previously. It was my opinion that at this stage, the pruning would represent topping of the trees through the removal of two-thirds of the tree's height, and that this would contravene best practice guidelines, as outlined within British Standard Guidelines. And it would bring about an unacceptable level of harm to both the tree's health and their amenity. Therefore, it was determined it would be expedient in the interests of amenity to make the five lime trees subject to an order, so to reinstate the protection that is removed by the serving and elapsing of the notice. This would seek to prevent the pruning and prevent the unacceptable level of harm to the amenity of the area that would result. Following the serving of the TPO, there was a TPO application, which has since been withdrawn, which was made also by the same tree surgeons. In communication that followed, the owners of 15 Woodvale Road indicated to the council that their tree surgeons had erroneously submitted both the Section 211 notice and the subsequent TPO application. They stated their tree surgeon had agreed to approach the council and seek advice regarding what level of pruning would be considered acceptable, but instead they served notice stating intention to pollard. One duly made objection to the TPO was submitted to the council on the 17th of April 2024. The objection, which can also be seen within the report, is summarized as follows. The Section 211 was made without the homeowner's knowledge. Their names were not included in the notice. Their intention was to collaborate with the council. The planning application has since been withdrawn. In response, the planning application that was withdrawn was the subsequent TPO application because there isn't really a legal mechanism by which a Section 211 notice can be withdrawn. The owners' names unfortunately do not have to be contained within a Section 211 notice in order for it to be considered to be duly made. Although it is appreciated that the homeowners may not have intended for a Section 211 notice to have been served, a notice was served, and it contained enough particulars so as to fulfil the requirements of the underlying legislation. There's not a legal mechanism by which a duly served notice can be said to be withdrawn. This means that once received, the council has a six weeks' notice period in which to consider whether it is expedient in the interests of amenity to make the tree subject to an order. If a TPO is not made within this notice period, and once the notice period has elapsed, then this would enable a person to carry out the intended works to the tree. Likewise, if the order is not confirmed, then also the work stated within the subject to 11 notice could be carried out. There was a late representation that was also sent in, which added other things which ordinarily I think would have been included within an objection. Noticeably that the TPO increases cost. Quotes received in order to prune the trees have doubled due to the additional complexity with regards to the TPO. In response to that, I'm not aware that TPO applications or works to TPO trees are ordinarily any more expensive than works to trees in a conservation area. Both trees are protected and they both require some form of notice or application to be submitted. The representation also discusses a kind of like an added level of burden really, in that the epicomic growth, which is the growth at the bottom of the trees, now is subject to the need for an application in order to be pruned, and that this is something that must be done regularly. So the homeowners are now tied into some, you know, kind of system whereby they have to regularly apply. Well, unless an exemption is applied, then the pruning of the epicomic growth was already subject to the need for us to be served notice. Unless that work was exempt for some other reason, then the homeowners ought to have been serving as notice of their intention to do that works anyway. In fact, the TPO does in some senses make that situation a little bit easier, because with the notice you have to apply routinely for every single instance that you want to carry out the work, whereas with a TPO application, you can apply for a schedule of work that can be conducted at regular intervals over the course of multiple years. So it actually makes that process a little less onerous. There was also additional concern raised that children playing in the trees and grabbing at leaves may mean that the homeowners face criminal charges. Well, the trees were always protected, and the prohibited activities that the trees are subject to are largely the same, whether they're protected within the conservation area or by TPO legislation. Not really anything has changed in regard to that. And in neither case would a child playing in trees or grabbing at leaves be something that the council would seek to enforce. You know, it's not something that we would consider a prohibited activity. Finally, in terms of amenity, I refer you to images of the trees in Appendix D. They are mature lime trees. They're of very tall stature. They're very visible, and they're imposing on the street scene where they can be seen from various vantage points. In good outward condition, they're not in a conflict with adjacent buildings per se, and they have what I consider to be a good future retention span, meaning they're going to offer a good level of amenity to the conservation area for some time to come. They're in keeping with the leafy nature of the Encliff Conservation Area, where they make a positive contribution to the local and offer habitat to local wildlife. And that concludes my summary. Thank you.
Thank you Vanessa. We have two speakers, Mr Speaker against this application, James and Kate Nixon. Are you going to do this jointly? Just you? Right, you have five minutes. If you can just press the one that's got down.
That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here to share our objection and apologies. I'm very nervous, so if I stop, that's why. My name is Kate, and I'm here with my partner, James. James is from Sheffield. We moved back here in lockdown with our little girl. We fell in love with the area in our house due to being surrounded by the trees and all the local green spaces. Before I give some background, I just wanted to quickly thank Vanessa, the planning officer. She's been really professional and helpful during this process, and we really appreciate and also apologize for having taken up yours and the council's time. We have five beautiful mature lime trees in our garden, which we maintain regularly. Given Encliff is a conservation area, we've always collaborated with the council to ensure everything is compliant. This year, we had a five-minute chat with a tree surgeon who was working on the neighbour's tree. He said it looked like the trees had been pollarded in the past, and it could be a good option. We said we were happy with a simple crown reduction, but he said he would chat to the council to see what they would be happy with and get back to us. We didn't receive a quote for the work or agree to any work. Next thing we know, a TPO arrived through the post. We went on to the planning portal and saw that JW Tree Care submitted very basic plans to pollard the trees, something we had not agreed to or even quoted for. The application did not even include our names. He didn't actually know our names because we'd only had a five-minute chat in the street. It therefore is very unfair to be given a TPO when our intention is to collaborate with the council to ensure we work within the conservation area guidelines. This has been the case in the past applications and also with recent work we undertook with a new tree surgeon. When we realised the planning officer had visited the road to view the trees, we felt disappointed that they did not contact us to view the trees from the garden. We both worked from home, and had this contact been made, we would have been alerted to an application having been made and even just had a heads-up on what was going on. The TPO affects us in both practical and personal ways. The entrance to the garden from the house is down a very small alley. You can't see this from the street, and the gap is less than one metre wide. I have a picture of our daughter, and she can reach the span without her arms even fully wide. Thank you Vanessa for explaining the epicomic growth. One of the things we thought the TPO implicated was we needed to apply for plans, but you've explained how that works. Simple things like cutting the hedge in the past were never an issue. Now this becomes more complex. Logically, we know that a small child pulling on some leaves is not going to end us up in jail, but with anxiety and worry, things aren't logical. And I think that's the thing we wanted to share here of what the TPO has meant to us. So things like cutting the hedge in the past weren't an issue. There might have been a little branch or a bit of epicomic growth poking through. Now we're probably worried about cutting the hedges because we might cut a small piece of a branch. The planning officer's report highlights no financial implication, but we disagree. For more planning applications need to be approved, but also personally, we had quotes back in November, and once the TPO was issued, we re-approached and said we want to have those two of our quotes, one increased by double and one increased by £500 due to more diligence needed to be taken. But the biggest impact I want to share is the personal impact it's had on us. When the TPO came through, we didn't actually give it much thought because we didn't really know what it meant. But once we started reading up on the fines people have received, people struggling to sell their homes once they had a TPO, my anxiety went through the roof. We can't enjoy being out in the garden. We have a two and a five-year-old, and I spend all my time telling them to stop making potion with leaves they've pulled off the tree because it could lead us to having a £20,000 fine. I go to bed with a knot in my stomach, thinking we might struggle to sell the house one day. The girls might grab some twigs to make ones and we get in trouble. It's changed the way that we play, and that's down to the TPO and also then this anxiety, which is on me, but it's just not helped. It's caused us stress and upset for something that we didn't do. Someone has done it without our express commission. And so we're unsure why the TP must remain in light of the above. It seems heavy-handed and unfair, given our compliance with the council in the past and also in the present since the TPO has come into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Can I actually come up and add that?
Yeah, do you want me to answer directly, or do you want councillors to ask questions regarding what's been said? I can do it either way, really. I'm just... Okay. Yeah, I think I've covered really most of what's been said in your representation and objections. I think nobody's going to go to jail for pulling off leaves. I think that's one thing I really want to reassure you for. The TPO doesn't really substantially change the prohibited activities that were already in place with regards to conservation area. There are some slight differences, I think, in terms of fines, but really the prohibited activities remain the same, and you'd have to do something considerable to the trees without consent for there to be any sort of issue regarding enforcement action or being prosecuted. Certainly, we don't really worry about people trimming hedges and a small branch, you know, epicomic growth, which is routinely removed anyway, being caught. The bigger concern in this is that the Section 211 notice that was served, even if it was served without your knowledge, is duly made. And we don't have a legal mechanism whereby we can ignore it or withdraw it. And what that does is it seeks to remove the protection that did exist on your trees. So if we don't then re-establish that with a TPO, theoretically, somebody could then cut the trees in half in a manner that, in my assessment, would be damaging to the amenity of the conservation area. I appreciate that it may not have been your intention for this to occur, but it has. And now the only consideration for me is would the action in that Section 211 notice, if it were carried out, result in an unacceptable level of harm to the conservation area? In my opinion, it would. Thereby, it's expedient in the interests of amenity to make the trees subject to an order so as to re-establish that protection.
Thank you Vanessa.
Chair, just before we move on to questions, I just wondered if we can ask Kate and James if they're happy with that response from our officer, you know, about they're not going to get fined for cutting the edge and... I'm a grandfather now. He's won this week, so, you know, your passion came over about your young ones playing in the garden, and that's not what it's all about. Are you happy with what the officers just said about you won't get fined, you won't get sent to prison about cutting branches off trees and kids playing with branches?
Yeah, I think that logically, we know that. We know that. I think the thing for me, I think Vanessa just mentioned is, just so it's really clear, and I think not many people know this, that essentially a stranger can apply for something for your property that you do not agree to, and it ends up the trees, then we are legal... Like, you know, we could get fined for them. And yes, we know the plucking, but it's that pressure of knowing that they've now got a legal status on them. I think that's the main thing, that we're just like, it seems very unfair. And I don't think people know, I don't think people know that someone can apply for something on your property that doesn't even have your name on it, and it can have this impact on you.
Yeah, I don't want to overdo it because we shouldn't go backwards and forwards, but, I just wanted to make sure you're happy with that. Consequently, you know, you won't get fined, you won't get a prison about that type of thing, but I do apologise, Chair, for coming in there, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Laura?
Sorry, Chair. Couldn't I just ask that the officer responds to the additional representation? Thank you.
I just want to point something out. The trees were already protected. They were always protected under Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. And the terms of that remain largely unchanged by the TPO in that there are certain prohibited activities. The only real difference is that under a Section 211 notice, you inform us of your intention to do works, or someone does that on your behalf. With regards to TPO application, you seek consent. It's a slightly different format, and there is a slightly increased level of protection with regards to TPO in that we can just say no. No, we don't want you to do that work. There has to be a reason for us to say no. It has to be reasonable, but there is also recourse for you to then take that to appeal, for example. That differs slightly from a Section 211 notice where you tell us what you want to do or what you intend to do, and we have three options. We either say nothing and let the six-week period elapse, in which case you can assume consent. We write to and say we have no objection, or we say a TPO. So I just want to bring about that distinction because it's not the case that trees that were not protected are now protected. They already were. Although I do appreciate your frustration that a Section 211 notice has been said without you being known. And yeah, perhaps people aren't aware of that, but unfortunately, that is the Town and Country Planning Act, which we're not in control of, unfortunately. A Section 211 notice does not have to contain the owner's name in order to be considered as duly served.
I heard you say it doesn't have to contain somebody's name, but there is something wrong with the process where a tree surgeon can put in a notice without your consent. Probably not a reputable tree surgeon, I would suggest, in this case. The fact that you hadn't even got a quote, you hadn't asked him to do the work, and he went ahead and did that notice. There should be some way of avoiding that in future. That's all I'm saying. We're all, you know, everybody's a victim of the process here. And where that is the case, there must be something we can do to remedy the process.
Unfortunately, we are governed by the Town and Country Planning Act, which is Parliament. You know, Parliament have decreed that this is the way that this process is carried out. We could choose to disregard the Section 211 notice, but if that occurs, if we did that, then the protection afforded those trees is removed. That's the way the law works. If somebody then were to prune the trees in the way that they stated that they intended to in the notice, and a member of the public came to us and said, why did you not safeguard those trees? Their amenity is now diminished. We would have to answer to that. So yeah, I agree. It is very frustrating, and the same applies for TPO applications also. You don't have to own the trees in order to submit a TPO application, but these are not rules that are decreed by us as a council. It's Parliament that has determined that this is the process.
Nikki, action.
Very quickly, I just wanted to say that I do understand that sense of something being taken out of your control that you feel is your responsibility and the anxiety that that produces. And just to say thank you for coming, and I hope you understand, you know, what the officers have explained and why it is this way. But given how nervous you were, I just wanted to say well done and thank you for coming.
Henry?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my sympathies go out to the homeowners for the frustration caused and the fact that we seemingly can't put the genie back in the bottle on this one. I was wondering whether it would be possible to add a schedule of maintenance to the TPO at this point in order to clarify what further maintenance can go on without seeking permission and providing further reassurance?
So we can't insist on maintenance. The TPO protects the tree, and it is then up to the homeowner to apply. So it's the same as really with the Section 211 notice in that the onus for either stating the intention or seeking consent for works has always got to remain with the homeowner. But I'm quite happy to give pre-application advice, talk people through that. And like I said, with a TPO, there is the option to say, we would like to conduct some routine work removing the epicomic growth. You could say you're going to do that twice a year, and we could set a timeframe for that. So I think there is a process by which it could be made certainly less onerous than submitting a Section 211 notice every time.
Thanks Vanessa. I applaud anything we can do to take the stress out of this situation.
Got Douglas, thanks.
Thanks. It is a fine standard trees and certainly merits a TPO. Really, more trees in Sheffield should have the benefit of a tree preservation order because, of course, once they're gone, they're gone, and clearly the issue isn't you. What's really encouraging is you said that you wanted to collaborate with the authority and, you know, so actually it's the nicest thing that we hear, and hearing the dialogue between you and Vanessa is really helpful. So hopefully you come here and had some reassurance. It's just unfortunate that really you've got, you know, quite an interesting, slightly worrying issue with the tree surgeons who've come along. It's unfortunate that's just not a planning matter at all, and that's not something that we can do anything about. But yeah, it is useful for us to be alerted to that, so also support making the TPO, then hopefully has been useful experience to have come here today. Thanks, Chair. That's all.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I find this hugely frustrating, and I think we all do around this meeting. Young couple are doing the right thing, and it's just all backfired, and there's no way back from where we are, as far as I can see. Like councillor Notte, can I urge you to do all you possibly can to facilitate what they need to do now? You know, this couple are just wanting to do the right thing, and... You know, I can't see any way out of this, but, you know, if you can do all you can, I'm sure you will.
Yeah, I'll do whatever I can to make the TPO application process smooth. Like I said, I do routinely sort of talk to people, give pre-application advice. So yeah, absolutely, I will do that.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for sharing that. It definitely came across the impact that you've actually shared just by not knowing. And I think I would go echo what my colleague Laura mentioned, something, because the impact that it's had, I mean, we can clearly see what it had, but at the same time, Vanessa, the way you've handled this, which also the couple have, you know, shared. So thank you for that. But I just feel, because just to reassure, I wouldn't have known, you know, which tree, you know, accidentally when you're enjoying your garden with your children and everything. So don't feel that you have to, you know, stop all of that. I think continue with that, but I think today's meeting also will reassure that there's certain steps that can be avoided. And once you're aware, I think it makes you more relaxed, and because it was something new and it all of a sudden happened. But my frustration is again, just like others have mentioned, just having that general chat and then having to face all of this. Surely there should be something to be able to, you know, address... Surely there should be something to be able to, you know, address that, because we all know, not everybody is going to be fully aware of certain trees, what they have, can do or cannot do. We can find these in our gardens, but if you do face something like that, it has a knock-on effect that it's assumed that, you know, people are wanting to harm the tree or do something without consultation. So I don't know, I think it definitely needs something looking in at that stage. I know you said that it's probably nothing, but something that we can make sure that anybody does face that, they are actually supported through and not treated like they, they actually did have those intentions. So thank you for your time.
Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Being what's gone before, what's gone before with the, with the people, the tree surgeons, whoever they were, that did this work, and I'm wondering, with the, the Section 211, is there a cost implication to the people that own the tree? Please.
There's no cost involved in putting in a Section 211 notice or a TPO application. So it's, it's different from a wider planning application, which does garner a cost. It's free in both senses, yeah.
Mark, sorry, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to ask Vanessa, if the planning department turned down the TPO, so we followed, you know, and thought, oh, we're feeling sorry for this couple, they haven't done it, why should we grant it? Doesn't the tree, then, trees go back under the general conservation area anyway, and there wouldn't be any difference to the restrictions on what needs doing to them?
My understanding is that once a Section 211 notice has been made, if we choose to either ignore it, or not, not comment, or we choose to not make an order, then no, the protection that was afforded the trees is removed, and it is only reinstated if we serve a TPO. So theoretically, if we say nothing and don't TPO the trees, then that works could be carried out. I am not sure how long the time limit on that is for, I assume two years, which is the standard statutory time limit for most of these things.
Revert back to being in a conservation area where people know, this is where I live and I can't do anything I want with trees.
That the works could be carried out, and the, the issue is whether it would be expedient in the interests of amenity to make them subject to an order to prevent that works. We have a notice in front of us stating the intention to do the work. We have three ways in which we can respond. If we think that it's going to significantly impact on the amenity of the area, we must consider whether to make them an order, and that's what we've done.
So they were, the application was to do an awful lot of work, more than what, than what was allowed?
It was to cut the trees in half, which may not have been the, the tree owner's intention, but actually that's what was applied for. Since then, work has been conducted to the trees, very sensitive work in, in kind of an appropriate manner. So the TPO doesn't stand in the way of works occurring.
Ricky?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. If you let the Section 211 go, the tree surgeons can't do anything because it's not their trees, is that right?
The tree surgeons would require consent from the owner, but the wider issue is that we as a council would not have done anything to prevent that work. So potentially it could be carried out. Say, for example, if the homeowner has changed their minds and decided, actually, we did want them to be pollarded, then there would be no objection to that.
I suspect from what I've heard that, I'm not sure the homeowners would agree with that.
But we don't know somebody else's intention. We can't know. And so we have, it's very binary. Once we receive a Section 211 notice, if we think that the trees are worthy of a TPO, and we don't want to see that pruning works occur, then this is the course of action. And the issue today is whether we confirm that order in order to potentially prevent said works from occurring.
Yeah, okay, I, I kind of understand. I just think the whole process, at national level, needs a complete re-look. It seems a bit of a nonsense, really.
I think we went into comments at that time, at that point as well, so we set ours up. Now it's down to the vote, and the vote is to seek confirmation of tree preservation order number 477. Tony?
I hope that the people that are here understand what, what, what's happening. But I agree with, I agree that the, the TPO should remain.
Laura?
I agree in the absence of common sense in this rule, basically.
Same as Laura, I agree, but it's just that the people had to face all of this without knowing.
Mark?
With some reluctance, I will agree with my colleagues in that I think the clinching thing was when you said 50% of the trees could be removed. I think that, for me, was the clincher. But I would really like to say, well done for a very good presentation. And can I assure you that no one in the council, officers or councillors are monsters? You know, we're, they're all decent, honourable people. You're not going to be hauled over an illegal code. Thank you.
Nikki?
Yes, same for me. You know, my feelings on it, and well done.
Mia?
Yeah, same from us, unfortunately.
Yeah, should look to me again, Chair, but I hope you're more content listening to what we've had to go through today, and when you go from here, keep in contact with the officer. She'll point you in the right direction, and it is a shame that the contractor has done this to you. You know, we all feel that in this room. You know, when you first started, you put your presentation forward, and you kept it together. So well done. Vote for it, Chair.
Douglas?
Yes, I agree the TPO should be confirmed.
Henry?
I'd agree with the confirmation of the TPO. You, you live in a lovely, leafy part of a very leafy city, and with that, we have some really good tree surgeons in Sheffield, so, you know, keep looking.
Ladies?
Reluctantly have to agree.
Chris?
Yeah, I find it hugely difficult. I mean, my, my feeling is that the trees are at risk if there's no protection from, from, from the current occupants, and the council can come back at a future date with another Section 211 notice. So I'm, I'm going to vote against.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I understand where the officers are coming from, but I'm really struggling to support clearly a broken system, therefore I'm going to vote against.
Yeah, right. Motion is passed, thank you.
Right, we move on. Item eight, we have applications in various acts and regulations. Two applications to hear today. Item 8A, planning application, number 23/02132/ful, land between 216B and 28820 Well Lane, Sheffield 17, page 33 of the agenda. And I'll hand over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I'll take you through the slide first, but you, you'll see first of all, this is an application in Section 73 to vary conditions on a, on a previous permission. Members may recall that permission being granted in November 2020 for this piece of land off 20 Well Lane, which now houses an 80-bed care home as a result of that, that planning permission. The application seeks to vary two conditions, numbers two and 39. Number two is a condition members will be familiar with, that lists all the approved plans and documents that go with that, that permission. And the need to vary that condition results from the changes that have been sought. Condition 39 is, is probably the more pertinent one, which was a condition that prevented any removal or pruning of trees, shrubs or hedges without the prior approval of the local planning authority. Of those approved documents, in condition two, it indicated a 1.2-metre fence along the frontage of the site with a retained hedge, but of no specific height along that, that frontage. So that is on the, to the south of the access road at the very top of this plan, running to the, to the edge of the site before it then returned at a right angle. There is, there is an existing hedge there, and at the time of the previous, of the original consent, the proposal was for a 1.2-metre timber kind of post and rail fence along that frontage with the retained hedge. As I say, there was no confirmation of its intended retained height. In practice, what happened is a 2.3-metre green mesh fence was installed, as opposed to the 1.2-metre timber post and rail fence, and the hedge retained. These images are taken from further south along 20 Well Lane, and this isn't the hedge concern, but it gives, it gives a bit of context. So you can just see there a footpath on the left-hand side, which is the only footpath serving this length of 20 Well Lane. These hedges belong to other properties and aren't anything to do with the application, but as you've shown for context, again, this is the same thing. These aren't the, the hedges within the, the property boundary. The hedge that we're concerned with starts immediately after the house for sale sign. And this is a closer view of it. You can just make out in there the, the mesh fence, which is an unauthorised fence, which is erected at 2.3 metres high, and the hedge grows beyond that. I say 2.3 metres, the fence panels are 2.3 metres, the lane slopes, so the panels are erected level, if you like, so the 2.3 metres is a minimum. And as the, as the ground floor falls and the, the panels stagger, that height has increased slightly. This image is looking down towards the site's entrance. And then this image is looking back up, 20 Well Lane with the care home on the right. And you can just see behind the, the kind of the totem sign, there is a electricity substation, which the hedge currently screens other than from this kind of oblique angle. This is slightly more northerly view. As submitted, the application sought to retain the mesh fence, but at 1.2 metres, and to reduce the hedge to 1.2 metres in height. We viewed that not acceptable, given that it was too significant a reduction in the, in the height of the, the boundary treatment, because it does offer some screening benefits for people travelling up and down 20 Well Lane. So that subsequently has been amended to the hedge maintained, being maintained at a minimum height of 1.8 metres, and the fence being reduced to 1.8 metres in height. Again, with the acknowledgement that the panels will be set level on the, on the ground slopes. There is also now a new landscape maintenance plan that's been submitted, which, which is part of a revised recommendation variation in the wording of condition two. So that would present one of a, a, a set of newly approved documents. As I said previously, condition 39 prevents any removal or pruning of trees without prior approval, which on a site of this scale, and with, with the number of trees that are on the site, is, is, is quite onerous and to some extent impractical. So the revised proposal, which also relies upon the landscape maintenance plan, is to allow for works to be carried out for safety reasons, where they're potentially affecting residents within the care home, or where the, the trees are getting to a point where they are or may damage the building without, without work being done to them. And so the proposal is for that to be allowed for within the terms of the landscape maintenance plan that would be an approved document, without the need for a further application. What's worth making clear is any works beyond that, beyond essentially pruning for safety reasons and for building safety reasons, would require a form of application to have those works approved. So for example, if a tree was intended to be removed wholesale, then, then that would, would need an approval. Or if works were just intended to be carried out to reduce the height of trees that weren't causing an impact on the building or, or personal safety, then that would also need a, an application. It's worth, worth also noting that there was a previously, with previous application that was withdrawn, which was for more intensive tree works that did include removals. And that is reflected in the representation section and within the report. Just quickly show a few more images. So this is an example of, I believe that's Cecily Berch at that point, which leans and blows in the wind and gets quite close to the building, overhangs a balcony area, or an elevated terrace area, and that has the potential to cause either damage to the building or, or to anyone sitting out on the, on the balcony. So that's an example of, of work that will be carried out to prune elements of that tree. I'm sorry about that image, that seems to be both wonky and blurred. These are other trees that surround the edge of the site that may not be immediately causing any danger in normal conditions, but with windy weather, et cetera, may do. So they may look to prune some of those. And these are just general images showing you the, that's taken from an upper-floor terrace. Sorry, there's a bit of glare on that, a bit of reflection on that one. But it shows the extent of tree coverage across the site and where they are getting quite close to buildings in places. So there have been two definite stages of the application with different publicity periods. And on the more recent version, that resulted in 23 objections that are listed within the report. In, in very brief summary, they concentrate on, on the impact of the hedges and trees, and that they are needed to screen the building, that the landscape maintenance plan is too vague and leaves too much in the hands of people carrying out the work, and that the works result in harm to biodiversity. It's, it's officers' view that what we have now, what we've presented before you is that the revised proposals allow the, the hedge along the 20 Well Lane frontage to remain at a, at an appropriate height that will retain its screening function and be more manageable, and otherwise across a site represents sensible management of the trees in, in, in normal conditions where trees are, are close to buildings. And it's the recommendation for approval, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. We have two speakers in this application, against the application Alison Patrick and David Patrick.
Hello, thank you very much for giving us your time today. I'll, I'll start whilst David's handing those out.
One up here. Are you going to do it together or are you going to do two separate?
It's Joanne, she said we've got two separate points to make, so we're going to speak separately, if that's okay.
That's right, so each of you will have five minutes.
Thank you. So I'm here today to object to the variance that the current applicants have put in. I'm not here on my own account, I'm here to represent a neighbourhood group, which consists of all the people who live around the site. We have been subjected to a number, as I believe Mr Healy has pointed out, planning applications over the course of this build and requests to vary what was originally agreed. Sometimes it seemed to be a monthly occurrence, and as you can imagine, the community, through no fault of the council, are becoming very fatigued with the constant bombardment of applications and the need to scrutinise frequently the planning portal. Of particular concern to our group today is a request to water down the original planning condition protecting the tree cover on the western boundary, which you've seen some pictures earlier, and we've also supplied our version. The original condition, as Mr Healy points out, stated that all works to the western boundary trees must require a further approval and oversight of the council's planning department. I'm sure that you can recall that the trees and their protection formed a vital part of the original permission, which passed with only one vote at the planning meeting and was not supported by anybody in the local community. The trees themselves predate not only the care home, but all the 1960s St Quentin housing development and are the remnants of Lady Spring Wood. As such, they are completely mature and as a result have not increased in size in several decades. The rationale to leave them untouched in the original permission was to protect local amenity by providing vital screening for homes from what is a very large-scale four-storey building. These trees were in fact protected by a tree protection fence during the entire three years of building work to ensure that they remained totally undisturbed. After two previous applications, yet again, the landowners have applied to trim and manage these trees, this time using safety to their building and residents as well as their insurance as the reasons to be given as what amounts to a blanket permission. This may seem an innocuous request, however, what is not made clear from the application is that the trees in question are some significant distance away from their building line or their residence. We have provided photographs as an evidence of this fact. The builder's own self-imposed fence means that residents cannot be within ten metres of the nearest tree line and the building itself is further away. In fact, many trees listed in the application are a good deal further away than that. The plan also includes trees marked as retained, which are not actually on the applicant's own property, even according to their own drawings. This must call into question the veracity and reliability of their application. The trees have long existed without the maintenance the applicant contends they need, including the building process itself. Furthermore, the applicants have shown from previous planning applications, which I believe Mr Healy alluded to, that we've seen them, sorry, apologies, they've shown from previous planning applications a desire to significantly reduce the tree cover. After withdrawing those applications, we see them slipping in this new request, hidden amongst their overall landscape plan, rather than previous more direct applications to vary the original condition. I would also point out they have already removed entirely without permission one tree on the western boundary, as well as two on the east at the entrance. And any further pruning is unnecessary, and to thin this cover at all would further expose this vast building to its neighbours. The neighbourhood and the community very much need the oversight of the council to protect them from further degradation of the site and the cover the last few trees provide. We've requested a TPO order, but we were advised by the planning department that this was not necessary due to the original planning condition that we now find under review. We've since been advised that over pruning, as per this new application, will be subject to an enforcement action. I am sure you can appreciate that enforcement does little here. Once tree cover is lost, it cannot easily be replaced. It beggars belief that we ought to put the oversight of tree preservation in the hands of those who have a vested interest in removing or reducing those trees, and from previous applications have shown a desire to do so. Please do not leave us in the position that those who care the least about the trees will be able to act as arbiters in what maintenance, if any, is really necessary. The applicants have shown they have little regard for us, and we now rely on our council to protect us from further intrusion into our homes from these out-of-town developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison.
Okay. This site has already suffered from the environmental degradation, and the previous landowner was subject to legal action by the Forestry Commission for the illegal removal of mature trees, oak, beech, willow, to name but a few, just prior to seeking planning permission for the care home. While this is not the plan here, there does need to be a better reparation for the ecology that has been lost. As you will know, the care home was built on a greenfield site, albeit one of low quality, but it did support a wide variety of flora and fauna, badgers, foxes, owls and raptors, which would have fed on the many small mammals that would have been present. Since the care home development started, there has been a notable decrease in the large mammals and owls. I personally have not seen a badger or fox since, they were regular visitors to all the neighbouring properties. And the red kite that roosted on the site has disappeared altogether. I note that the overall plan is very much a hotel garden, and little thought has been given to replacing where possible the huge amount of habitat that has been removed from a previously undeveloped site. Despite the size of the building, trees on the plant appear to be very much garden trees and do not have sufficient height or variety to provide further screening or habitat. The turf proposed for the western side is very unimaginative. Turf provides very little habitat at all, and I'll also point out that large amounts of plastic and builder's litter has been put underneath the topsoil on this western side. As this area is not accessible to residents and is behind their fence, surely native hedgerow planting and native shrubbery could have been used here to replace lost habitat. The overall plan does little to blend the building into its surroundings, a requirement of the original submission, permission, and there appears to be significant mission creep, with much reduced use of meadowflowers and native planting as per the original permission. There has been no real attention paid to screening the site from the street view on Twenty Well Lane, and the owners seem determined to expose the building to the road with lower hedges and sparse planting, rather than blend it in as was originally required. As you'll recall, the community very much opposed this building, and it has proved to be more imposing and unattractive than we feared. Our only hope was that there would be some attempt to put back what was lost and to try and blend the building into its surroundings. This plan achieves none of this and only seeks to further expose the building on all sides to its neighbours. We are tired of constantly having to monitor what the owners submit as plans, as well as what they do on and off-site. With the multiple applications that the developer has put in regarding the landscaping of this site, each varying from the original that was granted permission with various conditions, it has been difficult to keep abreast. Sorry, I've just clicked on something, shouldn't. Sorry, bear with. It has been difficult to keep abreast of what the developer actually wants. This has been particularly so as neighbours have not been updated or kept informed about changes to the application, and how the developer keeps trying to diminish or remove the various conditions. As a representative of neighbours whose gardens border this site, it came something of a surprise that this meeting was taking place and that neighbours had not been informed so that personal representation could be made. We therefore urge you to look at this application more sceptically and require the applicant to be more ambitious in replacing the lost flora and protecting that which remains as was required in their original planning permission. We're not asking for anything additional, we are simply asking for the council to hold the developers to the spirit and letter of the original conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You wish to respond?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, just a few things to kind of respond to there. I appreciate there have been a lot of applications. Unfortunately, that is quite common with the development of this scale, that whenever a minor alteration is sought or intended by an applicant, it is a requirement of the process that they come to us to seek that approval for that change, and we have no control over that. That's something that is often at the request of the developer. I think the important thing to note here is that this is a request just to amend those two conditions. So whilst I appreciate there's some frustration with what's gone before in terms of wholesale tree removal from the site, mentions of that, and loss of biodiversity on the site, that's either something that happened before the initial application was submitted or was later taken account of in as far as it could at that stage in terms of biodiversity. And things like the quality of the landscaping, that again is a separate matter that you'll see from page forty-eight, I believe, where the planning history is listed, that there have been two previous applications that deal with the approval of the landscape details through conditions. And that's not what we're here to consider today. What we're here to consider is simply the request to reduce the height of the boundary hedge along the frontage and its associated fence height, and to effectively add a landscape maintenance plan to condition two, which will allow for regular routine maintenance of the trees to occur. It's perhaps worth pointing out a couple of phrases that are in the report, but in relation to both trees and the existing features, this is, the trees and the hedge. So in terms of the existing trees, pruning would only be carried out if necessary following inspection, in keeping with appropriate horticultural practice and avoiding both bird breeding season and allowing for inspection of bat roosts etc. Only works to the limbs that are at risk of damaging the building or resident's safety to be implemented, and the extent of works is to be kept a minimum until an application can be submitted to the planning authority in writing for anything beyond that. And then in terms of the hedging, the boundary fence line along Twenty Well Lane is to maintain to a minimum height of 1.8 metres above the footpath and the pavement side of the wire fence to prevent encroachment onto the pedestrian footpath, that's to reduce its narrowing of the footpath at that point. So the works are, within this document, quite limited. If, I'm afraid, if there are further, more extensive works requested by the operator of the care home to remove any trees, then that would result in a further application. And I think the one final point, or makes about enforcement, yes, we're aware that there is some outstanding enforcement action in relation to particularly works to the frontage, where there is scope through discussions on that to enhance the landscaping that has taken place in recompense for any losses that have occurred since the development commenced. I don't think I can add anything else to that, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Could I ask Alison and David, could you go back to the seats? Thank you. And we now go to, get my pad ready, members' questions, and can I just, it is questions, not comments. Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the people that have just been and spoke to us. It's a thing that we went to see yesterday up at the care home. From my understanding of what we saw yesterday and what we were told and what's been said today, the pruning, as far as I'm concerned, would only be soft pruning, nothing very hard, nothing drastic, but just soft pruning to stop the branches of the tree or whatever is touching the building or encroaching onto the balcony. I take that is, I take that is what was, is required here. Is that right, Chris? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Chair. I mean, there's an acceptance that in a document like this, it is a generic document that is intended to cover the whole site and all the trees on the site, so there is an element of, you know, a non-specific nature about it, but it's been drafted in a way that's been assessed by, sorry, the drafting of it has been assessed by our landscape officers who feel that the works proposed and the way in which it will be carried out in accordance with British standards etc. is all in full accordance with the kind of practice they would expect to see.
Can I come back? It's good, right. Yes, thank you. And how do we feel that this, I mean, obviously the objectors have said it would affect their amenity. If it's only going to be soft pruning, how much do you envisage it would affect the properties close by? Thank you.
Chair, I would not anticipate it having any significant impact. The tree cover is, obviously at this time of year it's at its greatest, but the tree cover is fairly dense, even though there have been some removals in the development process. And I wouldn't anticipate the level of work that we're talking about to have any significant impact on things like privacy overlooking, or even kind of exposing more of the building to view.
Henry?
Thank you, Chair. Two questions, if I may. Firstly, both yourselves, Mr Healy and also the objectors, mentioned the reduction in the height of the fence. My understanding is that the change to the condition is to increase the minimum height, so effectively we're reducing the actual height of the hedge from what it is now, but increasing the minimum that it has to be from 1.2 to 1.8.
Yes, Chair, although the original approval didn't specify a height necessarily of the hedge, only of the boundary treatment that went with the hedge, which was the fence.
And secondly, given the generic nature of the landscape management plan and the advice that was offered to local residents not to apply for a TPO on any of the pre-established mature trees, would that advice not to apply for a TPO still stand?
I believe so, Chair, yes.
Douglas?
Thanks, Chair. So forgive me for not coming to these planning meetings very often. Chris, can you just take me through a few things here? I have to say, the report's slightly confusing and appreciated as a section seventy-three report. Just tell me, so this is approved in 2020, wasn't it? Two conditions, two and thirty-nine, they're as set out here, aren't they? So two required the landscape management plan, and condition thirty-nine required that no tree etc. should be removed or pruned. The landscape management plan, that's been complied with, has that's been provided? I'm confused because it's dated 11th of June 2024, which is four years after the planning permission was granted, was there an original landscape management plan?
Chair, without being pedantic, it's a landscape maintenance plan, but it's, the sentiments are saying, there wasn't a landscape maintenance plan in the original condition two, and this has been added to supplement and clarify what's been proposed.
Right, so does that get to the difference of what is actually being applied for now? It's not clear from the report frankly, what's being applied for. So I think you said it's a variation to condition two, so are you saying that the variation is the addition of this requirement to have a landscape maintenance plan and to incorporate that retrospectively into condition two?
Essentially, yes, yes, along with a change to condition thirty-nine.
I'll come on to thirty-nine in a moment, but is that the only change to condition two?
No, no, it isn't, because there's an associated plan that goes with that, which is...
Is that the tree, shrub and hedge management plan?
I appreciate there's a lot of documents listed there, but towards, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth and seventh documents down, the layouts have been updated. So they've got, you'll notice they've got a July 2024 reference, and then the only other document, two documents at the bottom.
Which page are you on, Chris?
I'm on page thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah.
So condition two... So condition two starts on page thirty-three, runs over onto page thirty-four. At the top of page thirty-four, on my version at least, it shows landscaping layouts, July twenty twenty-four times two, and then two documents at the very bottom, and the last one of which is the landscape maintenance plan.
Okay. So you're saying there's actually quite a number of documents that have been added at this stage and as part of this application? Is that right?
In the context of the amount of documents that there were originally, not a significant number, no, just those that reflect the change.
Sure. But there's a number of changes to condition two. Have they been addressed in this report?
Yes.
Because this seemed to be just about the landscape maintenance plan, but not really about the other ones.
The only changes to those documents are small annotations that reflect the wording in the landscape maintenance plan. For example, the height of the boundary treatment along twenty twelve lane.
Okay, all right. So is this, so you referred to the fact before that the developer's been in breach of at least one of the conditions. Is this effectively to regularise those breaches, which in your advice would be fairly minor and would be reasonable to remediate them?
Chair, this application doesn't deal with all the breaches, no.
Right. So there's a number of other breaches to the developer?
There've been some tree removals.
Tree removals already, so?
I said during my presentation, or in my answer to the speakers, that there were, there's at least one tree on the frontage and part of the hedging that had to come out to provide the access at the front there. And there were, I think there was, as I say, at least one tree that was taken out that wasn't supposed to be. But this, where the breaches that are, in a sense, that relates to condition thirty-nine, because that talks about no removals.
Can I ask about thirty-nine?
But also, just in terms of the hedge along and the boundary treatment along the frontage, you recall that there's now a two-point-three metre-high mesh fence as opposed to a one-point-two metre-high wooden fence, which is of itself a breach. And that is one of the breaches that this application seeks to resolve.
Okay. And you're saying that's a breach because that's not specified within the conditions? Are you saying it's a breach because it's a breach of the landscape maintenance plan?
No, it's just a breach of planning control. It's a different height.
Which condition?
Yes.
I mean, is it in here? You said it's, I think you said both that one point two is in the conditions and isn't in the conditions. And I'm just trying to work out where the breaches are.
The height of the boundary fence was supposed to be one point two metres.
Where does it say that?
On the drawing, that is, one of the landscaping layout drawings in condition two.
Perfect, thank you. Right, okay. So that's in breach, right, okay. So if you look at thirty-nine, and you said that trees have been removed, the condition was that no tree should be removed, so that's a breach. And what's proposed with this condition in this application? Is this about removing condition thirty-nine?
No.
Or changing it to some other wording? Where can I read that?
On page forty-three.
So is this text of the original condition thirty-nine?
What you see in front of you on page forty-three is a new condition thirty-nine.
Right. Where's the old condition thirty-nine? Just so we can compare the two. We want to know what's being taken out or added or changed.
Okay. So I think it's fair to say nothing's been taken out, it's just been added to. I'll read it verbatim, because it's not very long.
Yeah.
It says, unless otherwise indicated on the approved plans, no tree, shrub or hedge shall be removed or pruned without the prior written approval of the local planning authority. So what we've effectively done here is inserted the reference to the landscape. We're saying, instead of just saying unless indicated on the approved plans, we're now saying and/or the approved landscape maintenance plan.
Right. So that is just a regularised clause, that's condition thirty-nine, with what's going into condition two. Is that right?
Yeah, they're tied together.
So effectively it's just consequential. So the real issue is in what's in condition two?
It's both.
Yeah, okay. Is condition thirty-nine really just a sort of natural consequence of having this new landscape maintenance plan, and that will then be an approved document? So it follows that it's sensible to just make the conditions match up? Is that what you're trying to get at here?
No, this condition has its own requirements, and it's telling the applicant what they can and can't do.
I'm looking at the difference between the original version that you've just described and the one that's in here now. What's the point of it?
The point of it is to make clear to the applicant how they are to carry out works to trees or not.
It'd be good if it could make it clear to everyone else, too. It's quite confusing. All right. Okay. So just in simple terms, what's actually being proposed here? What's now to prevent the developer just taking out more trees, more hedges?
Nothing more than what was there previously. But that would be a breach of planning control that would be followed up in the normal way. So what this is doing is it's making clearer what works can be done without, or it's a more reasonable approach in that it's saying you can do some reasonable pruning of trees, whereas previously, literally everything, every time they wanted to trim a branch, they would have had to come back to us.
But it wouldn't be, because it would be in the landscape maintenance plan, which would be approved by condition, surely. So I'm trying to work out, what are we doing here with this day? It seems to be even less clear than when we started. And my office has not dealt with this by condition. I mean, the point is, there is a condition here. You know, would it not be reasonable for officers to have dealt this properly by looking at the application to discharge condition thirty-nine and not have us going around and saying this today? Sorry to label the point there, Mr Robb, about what's going on.
We have someone from the legal department who wishes to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know whether it would be helpful just to clarify that what's in front of members today is the proposed conditions for this new application. It's not the old conditions. So the previous application didn't have a landscape maintenance plan within it at all. So this proposed application is to insert that plan so that this can be dealt with. So just to clarify, there wasn't any ability to enforce a landscape management plan in the maintenance plan, sorry, Chris, in this, at the moment, because that doesn't currently exist in the current conditions. So this is, these are the new conditions that are proposed as part of this application. So I just hope that that made clarify what's being asked at the moment.
Sorry, I'll just come back on that. Appreciate the attempt to clarify. It's possibly made it slight worse, because actually you've just said that there wasn't a landscape maintenance plan, whereas Chris Healy's just told me a few minutes ago there was a landscape maintenance plan. What's going on? I'm kind of suggesting, you know, we just defer this, because I mean, I certainly don't understand what's going on. I have read this and tried to understand it. If there is a new landscape management plan, then we haven't seen it. And that seems to be what we're trying to discuss, but in the dark. It's not very helpful, frankly, and I don't want to be too unkind, but could we just perhaps get some clarification as to what exactly we're being asked to approve and what's the significance of that? Because I'm hearing from the residents that the developers got a track record of bad behaviour, taking out trees, not complying with the conditions. The hedge is clearly of benefit to residents in the site and outside it. There's clearly something up there. It does seem appropriate that we have a proper report on the real issues that are in contention there, which are far from clear here. I know you've tried.
Victoria?
Sorry.
Oh, go on.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to reiterate my view that Chris and I are saying the same thing. And my understanding is that the report is quite clear about what's being asked of members today. So if anybody's got any questions about what the report is, obviously Chris is dealing with that. But just to reiterate once again, that there wasn't a landscape maintenance plan in the original permission. What was there is what Chris read out earlier, which was a condition thirty-nine, which prevented any maintenance of the trees without the written approval of the authority. So what this application is trying to do is trying to insert this maintenance plan so that the developer can prune, maintain the trees. So what you're being asked is essentially, it is a brand-new application, it will be a different planning application to the original, but what it will do is it will amend condition two in relation to the plans and condition thirty-nine to insert the new landscape maintenance plan. As I say, my understanding is that the planning officer and I are saying the same thing. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Well, I'll not label the point anymore. I've heard you say different things. Personally, I'd appreciate a deferral with a proper report to explain this, so that we can actually understand what's going to be lost if this application is granted.
I think that if you'd have been on the site visit yesterday, I think it would have been a lot clearer. So any of us that went on the site visit, I think it's, you know, round, and I think it's pretty much, we understand what's being asked. So I'll now continue with, you next?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I was with colleagues on the site visit yesterday. And my understanding was, in terms of the hedge, you could see that it was overgrown and it was difficult to walk up the pathway. And I think my understanding is also that by maintaining it slightly differently, well, actually, I'm not sure, I'm not totally sure why the height matters in terms of the width, but I'm not a shrub expert. But I can see that there is a case for making sure that the hedge is trimmed so people can walk up the pathway and doing it in a way which maintains the height. If there is some reason why the height matters to that, then let's hear it. The other issue we were shown were the overhanging branches, which it made sense they should be chopped back. But, you know, what I'm picking up quite obviously from the local residents is that there is a lack of trust. And you could see, and we did discuss it at the site visit, that some of the, I think it was the birch, silver birch trees that were very tall, that were reaching for the light and therefore getting very tall and overhanging on the balconies, for them to get the light they needed, you would have to chop back trees that were behind them. And I can see that is a concern, because if you don't trust the developer to maintain, if you think it's not in the developer's interests to maintain the trees properly, then I can see why you wouldn't want to give them those powers. That's my very simple understanding of it. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
Chris?
Yeah, essentially, Chair, that is correct. An example of why we need the application, or why applications need end up in the form it has, is the hedge is currently growing significantly over the public footpath. Now, there are highways enforcement powers to deal with that, which is separate to our role. But in essence, the strict interpretation of the current condition thirty-nine is that they would need to come to us to trim that back, which isn't practical or reasonable. Whereas with the new condition thirty-nine, with reference to the maintenance plan, that wasn't in the original condition two, that doesn't now have to happen. They can go ahead and trim that and keep it to the height, the minimum one point eight metre height that's been agreed.
Chair, can I just make a comment, just to remind members that all applications need to be dealt with in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. In terms of what is a material consideration, what's been mentioned at the moment is the previous behaviour of an applicant or a developer, and that's not a material consideration. So it's just dealing with the application before you, taking material considerations into account, as I say, not including any previous behaviour or trust issues. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I thought I knew what was going on, but I'm not so sure anymore. I guess my question is regarding condition thirty-nine, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the new landscape maintenance plan that has been put into condition two gives, sets out a set of work that the owner, site owner wants to do, and if they stick with that, they don't need any written permission from us. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm back on track then. My concern is, I thought it was Western Bank, but it's not. I think it's, when we were on the rooftop and those big tall trees, for the benefit of people who were on the site, I think, on the site visit, my concern was they were talking about quite significant topping. And I wouldn't want things like that to be done personally without some form of pre-agreement with the council. So can we, perhaps going with the new condition thirty-nine, we can reflect that in some form of variation?
Thanks, Chair. The trees that you're referring to here are effectively in the northern part of that plan there. And one or two silver birch, again, were pointed out on site that are quite tall and thin and blow quite close to the building. Works to those would fall within the remit of the landscape maintenance plan, I would suggest. Reducing the height of trees that are further back, that have no impact on personal safety or the building, it wouldn't fall within that. They would need to come to us. And there is an understanding of that with the applicant. They would need to come to us for approval of those works, if that answers the question. That would be a further application of some kind or contact with us of some kind to check interpretation, et cetera, at least.
Yeah, I would be, I think we're almost there, Chris, but I'm not sure necessarily, based on what I understood in my conversation yesterday, that that was necessarily their interpretation of things. So I'd like to, if you can confirm that, I'd be very happy.
Yeah, I agree with that. And we're aware, and we've had a conversation back in the office after that, yeah.
Gary?
Thanks, Chair. You're coming regularly, Douglas, are you coming regularly to this point now?
I don't think I'll be invited back at this rate.
Chair, sorry about that. There's a lot of breaches. And I would have thought that would have been, I know Victoria's going to say, we have to deal with what's in front of us, you know, the application, what's in front of us, we've got to deal with that. But I would have just thought, and we've got timeframes and everything else. But I just wondered if, you know, the breach is going to have been looked at first or brought up to us. And you did mention it, Chris, actually. You know, there is powers already, you know. If an edge or a tree is going out under a public highway, you know, they get sent a letter saying, put it back. And if you don't put it back, we'll put it back and then charge you. Is that still the case?
Chair, I can't comment on how the highway authority go about enforcing that. But it's my understanding that vegetation overgrowing the public footpath is, has the potential to result in some form of enforcement, yes.
So why do we have to condition that then? Why do we have to condition there?
It's not specific to that one element. It's a wider ability for them to be able to trim hedges when needed. As on a site of this scale, it will inevitably be from time to time, without having to come to us. As I said initially, their initial request was to reduce it to one point two metres high. We felt that was too much, and that one point eight was an appropriate level to maintain screening, quality of the hedge, et cetera.
Laura?
Because I'm subbing, I actually couldn't go on the visit yesterday, but before this committee, I did go up to look at it. So I have seen, and the hedge clearly does need pruning back. It's, well, it's, I'm not saying it's dangerous, but it's got the potential to be dangerous. Am I right, Chris, that the lands, at the moment, we've got no arrangements with them? A landscape maintenance plan would hopefully put us in a better position than we are without a landscape maintenance plan. And I do understand the residents' concerns because, you know, there's rules... And I do understand the residents' concerns, because, you know, there's rules being breached. But I've got to look at this, and going forward, with a landscape maintenance plan, we'll be able to more carefully monitor what they're doing. Is that right Chris? So we should be in a better position?
It's my view that the landscape maintenance plan will provide more clarity for everybody, both the applicant, ourselves, and, and hopefully for, for neighbours as well. In that neighbours won't feel there's a breach every time someone's cutting, cutting a hedge or, or pruning trees. And there's some clear guidance as to the extent of work that can be undertaken without needing to come back to us.
Nikki?
Thank you. I, I both understand the conditions that were, are explained and everything. My question is, because in the report, it's already mentioned that no development should commence until full details of measures to protect the existing trees, shrubs and hedges to be retained. And then obviously, further down, it says it's essential that this condition is complied with before any other work on site commences. Because obviously, once anything, any damage is done, it's obviously difficult to go back. So I totally understand the, the residents who actually shared their concerns regarding trees and stuff. So just a question that, say, just looking at the whole picture and what everybody said and what breaches have been broken in the past as well. This, why is it, landscape medicine plan and the other condition, by putting that in place, I understand that it's making it more effective and easier for the developer to, to get on with things, rather than keep coming backwards and forwards, and also has already got a criteria, what they can and cannot do. But God forbid, if, you know, like, something wasn't followed through, is there something in place? Because I think, my understanding, there is something in place, because it says, they will provide detailed measures to protect the existing, you know, those items. So I, I, I find it a positive move, but at the same time, I just want to understand that sometimes in reality, we have to, we've got all of these reports, we have to look at the reality. God forbid, if, if they didn't, and they caught a tree or a branch as they shouldn't have, is there something that you can actually then take back and? Is something in place basically, to avoid that?
Okay, Chair, I think the reference that was being made there to tree protection is Condition Nine on the original permission, which is not up for debate here, that still exists, that, that, that stays there. But it is more specifically related to the construction phase of, of the development. So that, that's not being proposed to be changed. And I think the rest of the question was around, what if they don't kind of comply with it? And, and that is a, you know, it's, we hope, it's hoped that they do. But if, if there are any deviations from the approved landscape maintenance plan, then that has the potential, which is subject of enforcement action, in the, in the normal way.
Nikki?
Thank you Chair. I may have asked this on the site visit Chris, so apologies, but the way it's set up at the moment, where the property owner has to ask for permission to chop things back, do things, maintain the, the, the trees and the hedges, is that normal? Is that usual practice across Sheffield with a development like this?
Chair, the condition is a, is a relatively standard condition, in that it's used quite a lot. And, and I think it's just that in, in practice on this site with proximity to the, to the buildings, it, it's proved to be more onerous than, than was probably originally intended. The condition as, as first drafted is there to make clear to a developer, which usually there's a plan identifying where trees are to be removed, for example. And the condition is effectively saying, you know, other than those areas, don't touch the trees. And as I say, it's a fairly standard requirement, but it, it's proved difficult to, to stick to on this site because of the proximity and the number of trees.
If I can just follow up, so at the moment, if they want to trim that hedge, so it doesn't cover the pathway, they have to come and ask permission to do that? Which seems strange. Yeah, all right.
Does anyone have any comments?
Can I just say one more? Just, I, I've just sat here reading the landscape maintenance plan several times over, just to double check, and I just think it is worth doing that, just to see what it says. Because I can, I'm saying that to members, obviously, officers who read it. I suppose my only query is in terms of interpretation of some of that language, so pruning in accordance with good horticultural and arboricultural practice. Is that open, is that a wide definition, or, you know, is there something that keeps them, who, who decides that? How is it? How is it agreed? Because we, we obviously have heard already about some people who sell their services claiming to be experts in tree maintenance, but actually cause a lot of problems.
Chair, that is what, that is, I think, mentioned earlier, there are elements of, of the document which we accept quite nonspecific, and, and phrases like that, you, you might say are, are, are one of them. I mean, they, they kind of backed up a little bit by statements further down that, that section, which talk about British standards, and then bullet point a number of the things that, it's about how you cut branches, where you cut branches, et cetera, for the health of the tree. And they are pretty well-established principles. And we feel that's as far as you can go with something without effectively going out each individual tree and marking where, where, where work is to take place, which is not, not realistic.
I've got Douglas first, Mark. Oh, Henry, I'm sorry, I never had him went up.
Yeah, I mean, coming, coming back to this subject of the nonspecific nature of part of the management or maintenance plan, if we approve these variations and the maintenance plan gets adopted, will that prevent specific trees being placed under further protection via a TPO? Because there are some really stunning examples in that stand, especially, there's a massive oak tree back there that, you know, is an absolute exemplar. And it would be highly regrettable if we approved the vari- variation on the conditions, and then those nonspecific parts of the maintenance plan would be used to take parts of those trees out.
Chair, I think if, if somebody subsequently requested certain specimens were subject, or, or groups were subject to a tree preservation order, then they'd be assessed by Vanessa in, in the normal way, in accordance with the normal scoring system. And if they were deemed worthy of protection, then, then the opportunity, that doesn't prevent that from happening. I think we said earlier that we didn't think it was necessary, but it doesn't prevent it from happening. And it would be my view that that, that protection at that stage would then trump the, the planning conditions.
Mark?
With the presentations that were made at the start, I think there was obviously a great deal of sort of hangover from the previous development of the building and the previous chopping down of trees and things like that. But it was quite obvious on the site visit yesterday that pruning was necessary, and pruning had to be done. The only question I would have about it is, is it possible to separate out the hedge pruning and allow them to do that pretty much when and if necess- as necessary? But remain the order where they have to come to us for permissions for the tree pruning?
Chair, that is effectively how the landscape maintenance plan is, is structured. There's separate sections on the existing trees, and, and a separate section on, on the hedging. And, and it's within the tree section that it ma- it makes specific comment about the need for further application for it works beyond the, the, what's set out in the maintenance plan. But equally, if, if for whatever reason they decided they wanted to remove the hedge, they would also have to come to us for that. But it specified how they will maintain that more, in, in more detail, because it's effectively a standalone item.
Nikki, but I think this will be the last one.
Sorry, I've had a lot of thoughts. I suppose my first thought was that the local residents should probably try and hire that guy that the previous people had. And you might end up with a tree protection order. But seriously, I can see why this is necessary, and it's good to have it, a, a schedule of maintenance. Again, going back to the slightly vague wording, so the par- second paragraph, it says, carry out any pruning if necessary, following inspection, in keeping with good horticultural practice, avoiding breeding bird season, professional advice shall be sought prior to carrying out any works to trees. Is there any definition of what professional advice is? I, I don't know about this, is there? Do we ha- do they have to have evidence of that? Again, later on, it says that these works should be kept to a minimum until an application can be submitted to us in writing. Because it says only those that are at risk of damaging buildings or people's safety should be, should be removed. So it's saying, if it goes above that, they need to come back to us. But there's this thing about, you know, there's an inspection and there's professional advice. Is there a, what's the bar for that, I suppose is what I'm saying, and how do we know that it's good enough given the previous case?
Chair, there is an element of interpretation within it, that's, that's acknowledged and, and accepted. And I think the, the two things, the, the two elements that we felt tied it down sufficiently were that there was seeking professional advice, and it was only works to limbs that are at risk of damaging the building or resident's safety to be implemented. So in, in some instances, if a tree's kind of forty metres away from the building that's been chopped in half, then that's obvious. There'll always be shades of grey somewhere a little in between, which, when they're raised with us, we would have to tackle with the, with the applicant. And if they're deemed to have gone beyond it, then they, they run the risk of enforcement action. I can't give you a categoric answer that would satisfy any uncertainties, because, because there are so many different circumstances for each tree, I suppose.
Is there a professional standard though, as in, you know, are you a member of a certain body to be a, a profession, a recognised professional in this field?
Yes, yes Chair, yeah.
One more, one more, I can actually, keep it brief please.
I'll keep it very brief, I just want to point out for clarification, based on the last application. Am I correct in my understanding that anybody can apply for a TPO on anybody's trees? And there's no cost? Is that correct?
I believe so Chair, yes.
Thank you.
I want to move to the vote now. So, Tony?
Yes, for the, for the recommendation Chair.
Laura?
For the recommendation, as I think a landscape maintenance plan is better than nothing.
Is that?
For Chair.
Mark?
For Chair.
Nikki?
For Chair.
You?
For the recommendation Chair.
Gary?
For Chair. Voting against this one. And the reason for that is that Chris told us that simply it wasn't reasonable to expect the developers to have to apply for prior approval every time they wanted to trim the hedge, which is not the standard that we've applied in the last case that we had before us, where we said for the householders, actually it was expected that the landowner would apply for prior permission when needed. So, so I'm not, not happy with that.
It caused a rift here in our group.
That's okay.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation Chair.
Please?
For the recommendation Chair.
Richard?
Yeah, I support the officer's recommendation Chair.
That is passed. We're now going to go to a comfort break. Could you all be back for five past? Twenty-three, stroke, zero, one, seven, four, six, O U T, former Cannon Brewery, Rutland Road, Sheffield, page fifty-seven of the agenda, and Michael will do the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'll just run to the start of the presentation, which I think is. Thank you. So as I've heard, there's a detailed technical report before you. I'm not going to duplicate that in my presentation, but I'll just raise any summary of the key matters and describe the site and the development to you. There's also a supplementary report that just covers one additional representation, which I'll, I'll briefly go through. So the planning application is what we call a hybrid planning application. So that means it's part outlined, part in outline form and part in full form. And the reason for that is because there's demolition involved. So essentially, the, the site is the former Cannon Brewery site, and also the site to the north of that Neeps End, and the development is to demolish a large proportion of existing buildings on the site, and that's a full element. And then redevelop the site with a housing-led mixed-use development. So, and that's the outline part with all matters reserved. And so with all matters being reserved, there's no details of that development before you. Essentially, it's a, a use and a set of development parameters that, that have been submitted for, for approval. And so it's a hybrid planning application, and the, the site is the former Cannon Brewery. Sorry, my clicker's not playing ball. Thanks. Am I pressing the wrong thing? What did you do? Sorry about this slight technical issue. Wonder if the battery's running out? Right. Okay. Would it be okay if you flick through the slides for me? Thank, thank you. So, so the image of how you use a red line plan, just showing our outlining the site. And so there's triangular site to the south of Boyland Street. And then another differently angled triangle to the north of Boyland Street. There's Rutland Road running from the south-west to the north-east. And then there's Neeps End Lane running from the south-east to the north-west. And then there's a, a railway lining embankment along the north-ish side of the site. And then Rutland Road kind of climbs up the, the Don Valley beyond. So it's in, in the area of Neeps End, which is an area that's, that was historically full of industry. But now there's increasing number of, of leisure and retail uses, including adjacent cutlery hall, coming in. And this is just the, the same plan on a, on its survey base. So you can see the northern site has a warehouse on it and hard standing. And the southern site is, is effectively a perimeter block with the old brewery buildings and a central courtyard. In total, it measures about. In total, it measures about 1.8 hectares. So now I'll just run through a series of slides just showing the site. So the first image is looking at the site across the River Don from the walkway that runs into Kellam. So the bridge in the foreground is a listed structure, and then you can see the brew house building, which is fairly iconic local building on the site, modernist structure in the, is the highest building you can see. You can see the valley slope in the background, and you can see the grain warehouse running up Rutland Road on the right, and then the lower building in the kind of middle of the picture is the old brewery tap. And then this is just a closer view of the same thing. So this is the crossroads, Neeps End Lane, Rutland Road, which is a heavily trafficked crossroads, which is currently under highway works for improvement. I'm sure you'll have seen, for those of you that came on site visit. This is the iconic brewery building on the corner of Neeps End Lane and Boyland Street. As you can see, there was some architectural detail and effort gone into making a prominent building for the former Cannon Brewery. This is one of the buildings that will be retained, is proposed to be retained. This is a view along Boyland Street, so the street that separates the two parcels of land. And as you can see, it's heavily parked currently, it's used as a peripheral free parking area for businesses and some people, I'm sure, use the city centre currently. That will change with the new parking control zone and the warehouse on the left. This is the building, which is another very attractive building driven by the geometry of the roads. So this building is not proposed to be retained, it's standing at the junction of Boyland Street and Rutland Road. And then this is just a further off view from Hicks Street, from memory, looking down Rutland Road towards the site. Now, this is the old brewery access. You'll have seen, for those of you that came on site visit, that the gates have now been changed, but these were the previous Cannon Brewery gates with the historic water tower in the background, which is another building proposed to be retained. And then this is just a shot showing some of the, how improvement works taking place. This is a new formal crossing of a central reservation, and this is another element of how improvement works. These will be suds beds, so it's in keeping the greater green ethos. So this is the delivery of the housing zone north, connecting Sheffield scheme that's referred to in the report. And then this is an internal view of the site. It's a very interesting site, you can kind of legibly see the evolution of brewery complex over time. And the right-hand side of the picture is the water tower that's proposed to be retained as part of the development. And this is an internal view of the brew house. So this is where the brewing vessels went through the floor slabs. So this is a feature and element that the developer is interested in retaining and making a feature of. This building is proposed to be used as workspace, and then just a view looking up through the same brewing vessel void. And then this is just a couple of the views that you get from the top of the brew house. There's very attractive views across Sheffield towards the city centre and also down the Don Valley that are quite unusual in the scope because the building's higher than many of the buildings surrounding it. And this is a view of Neeps End, the site shaded yellow in nineteen fifty-one. So you can see the brewery building in its kind of heyday to the right, and then what was back-to-back housing at that time on the northern parcel on the left-hand side. And this is a view of the environmental's flood risk map. So one of the constraints to the site is that it's mainly in flood zone two, partly in flood zone three. So that's driven by potential flooding from the Don. So this is an extract of the unitary development plan, obviously written some time ago, over twenty years ago. So this shows the site as being within a general industrial zone. At that time, there was no proposal to change Neeps End into anything other than the site for general industries. And then this is an extract from the proposed Sheffield plan. So there's only a very limited way it can be placed on the Sheffield plan at this point in time, is currently under examination. Unfortunately, there's quite a lot going on on this plan, so you may not be able to read it very clearly, but essentially, there's two housing sites proposed within the two parcels of land that are the application site, and then the wider land round Neeps End and also Kellam to the southeast, sorry, southwest on the other side of the Don, is proposed as a priority area, so essentially a housing-led growth area. And then this is an evidence document that supports that proposed allocation. So this is what's called the Priority Neighbourhood Framework, which is essentially informed from a capacity study. So a capacity study was done to establish whether the residential growth in this area was feasible, and then there was what's called a framework document done to set out certain overarching principles. So the first stage is, is growth possible? The second stage was, if it is possible, how can we grow in a sustainable manner that creates a place rather than just a series of disconnected developments? And this is a plan within the framework that just shows existing local infrastructure because part of what they looked at obviously was the capacity of existing infrastructure in terms of schools, parks, doctors, et cetera, to support a new residential community. And they basically highlighted that there was local infrastructure that within what we'd call a walkable neighbourhood distance, however, there's likely to be additional places required. And then this is just the wider zone. I believe this is a plan provided by the applicant that shows the, what's in the two-kilometre walking catchment. So that's beyond a normal walking distance, which generally taken to be a ten-minute walk would be, or eight hundred metres would be, would be the general consensus. So this is the, just a list of the facilities and amenities in terms of schools, bus stops, tram stops, et cetera, and their relative distance from the site. From a fitness club within five hundred and fifty metres of the site to pedestrian park and gardens, Tesco Superstar near Infermary Road tram stop, et cetera. And then, so the site, there's a link, so a link to the proposed growth in this area is essentially a highways improvement scheme to try and connect it to the city centre. As it stands, or as it stood, the road environment is very hostile in terms of Rutland Road, Neeps End Lane, et cetera, being heavily trafficked, hard urban roads. So essentially, the council with other stakeholders looked at how that could be better connected, and they developed what's called the housing zone north connecting Sheffield proposals. So this is a plan that just illustrates that, and it includes the subs planters that you can see in the photo being prepared. Also, a full set of signal control crossings at the crossroads of Neeps End Line and Rutland Road, which is currently a very difficult junction to cross. They're proposing to address that. And then there'd be, the cycling pedestrian corridor would continue through Kellam and Neeps End to the southeast. There'd be an adjustment to close off Neeps End Line to through traffic from that junction to reduce traffic levels, and then pedestrians and cyclists could have an improved environment to get to the city centre. So the proposals in hybrids, as I say, the full application is for demolition. The buildings that are proposed to be demolished are essentially those outlined in red. Again, apologies, there's quite a lot going on on this plan, but the building, the brew house building is in black, not in red, therefore it's proposed to be retained, as is the grain silo on Rutland Road and the water tower. So that's the relevant information from that plan. And then this shows more clearly those retained structures in the plan provided by the applicant, identified in grey. And then these are other structures themselves. The design code that is produced is, suggests that keeping these buildings will help to avert a sense of place combined with new landscaping and buildings that are constructed in a sympathetic manner. And this is a plan, again, you won't be able to read this, but essentially, it sets maximum ordinance data and levels for the top part of all of the buildings on the site. So it's what we'd call a parameters plan for an outline permission. So it essentially says you can build up to, the cap for any buildings that come through a reserve matters application is these heights. It doesn't mean that we would necessarily accept buildings at that height if they weren't appropriately designed, but it basically caps that the height would be potentially comfortable with. So what it shows essentially is, there's a plan further on that'll show this more clearly, but most buildings range between six and eight storeys, and then also the potential for a fourteen-storey tower on the corner of Rutland Road and Boyland Street adjacent to the railway line. So this is just a building frontage alignment plan, so essentially just ties the developer to providing new buildings either at or close to the existing curb line to, partly to shield the internal spaces and partly to present a strong hard urban edge to the street. And then this is a agent, so this is what we call an illustrative plan. So for outline planning provisions, you have a combination of the regulatory plans, which are the parameter plans. So those are the ones you've just seen about the demolition and the heights and the building line and building zones. They also have submitted illustrative plans, so essentially the developer's saying these are the building constraints, they've submitted a design code that says, describes the type of buildings and spaces they would provide, and then a set of illustrations to show how they believe they could deliver the design code and the parameters. So this is one of those. So essentially, it shows the southern bit developed with kind of a perimeter block of buildings similar to the current layout of the brewery, then the central urban, central space, developed as what they term an urban oasis. So essentially, it would be a very large courtyard sheltered by the peripheral buildings and with ground floor, so retail, leisure and service uses to promote a vibrant environment where people would, you know, for instance, visit cafes, shops, et cetera, or just sit out and enjoy the environment with various landscaping features. The northern part would be developed into a series of what they're termed green streets, so there wouldn't be vehicle access other than service, but there would be essentially a landscape to provide amenity space sheltered from the surrounding environment. And this is a massing model to just demonstrate how the development they believe would, could look, developed to the upper scale parameters with no architectural detail in other than, in terms of roof forms. But this basically is there to try and prove that a development up to the heights refers could work on the site. And then this is the same massing model essentially put into a perspective aerial photograph. So obviously, there's a lot of interpolation and rendering gone on, but it's designed to give a visual impression of how the new area would sit in the city. And as you can see, it would be a high-density, impactful new part of the city that would rise generally above the surrounding buildings at this time. But officers' view is that it could be accommodated within the surrounding area, albeit it would be an intrusive presence, it wouldn't, officers deem that it wouldn't necessarily be a negative presence, subject to appropriate realisation of the development through architecture, et cetera. And this is a sketch of how the developer would see the kind of welcoming appearance of one of the entrances into the site. We retain brew house on the left, the new build on Neeps End Line on the right, and then you can see the water tower in the background. And then there's just a couple of views of the site. This one's from Neeps End Line, I believe, looking towards the site. This is a longer distance view down to the valley with the site in green in the foreground. And then this is a view from Peniston Road looking across. The area in, next to the road actually is a proposed development site as well in the emerging plan, so this view may ultimately be blocked by other buildings. And then this is a view looking down Rutland Road. As you can see, because of the topography, the developments appear less imposing than it may otherwise do. And then this is just a series of what they call sunlight assessments, so it doesn't look like, look at daylight, it looks at sunlight, just to see how the shadow cast of the buildings could potentially affect internal light levels, a series of diagrams. What officers gleaned from that was that essentially that there could be an issue with shading of spaces and lower floor buildings, so that concern's been flagged with the developer. So essentially, as I've said previously, there's no approval for a detailed development scheme. Any development would need to demonstrate acceptable daylight and sunlight levels, informed by relevant microclimate assessments. Okay, so if you could just go back to the site plan? Sorry. Yeah, thank you. So as I say, I'm not going to run through the full report, I'll just briefly pick up on a couple of matters. So the, there's a supplementary report before you. So the application has been publicised twice through local notices and in the press. The applicant also undertook pre-application consultation. The responses publicity was, the council publicity was essentially a response from a local business, a skip hire firm, raising, say, in neutral position, but stating that any development should be cognisant of the adjacent waste uses and make sure that it doesn't prejudice those uses, this is addressed in the report. There was a cycling representation from a resident as well, just making a specific point in relation to standard of cycle crossing it proposed. Again, that's picked up in the report. The further representation has been submitted, raises parking as an issue. So the access is a reserve matter, so the level of parking won't be fixed by any outline consent that issues from this application. However, the applicant submitted a transport assessment, which essentially suggests a car-free development other than a limited level of parking, so approximately thirty spaces. So that's what we've reviewed and my highways colleagues have reviewed, and we came to the conclusion that the development could potentially support a mainly car-free development because of the improvements to connect with what you brought about by the connecting Sheffield scheme and also the parking restrictions in the area that have been introduced in September. The further representations you can see in the report, essentially, it raises parking as a concern, and states that existing developments in Kellam have issues with parking, obtaining permits, the cost of permits, et cetera, and basically raises an objection on the basis of the suggestion that it could be a car-free development. So this is essentially dealt in the committee report between pages one oh one to one oh five, and the assessment undertaken that there is potential for a car-free development in this location, albeit the precise number of parking spaces would be reserved. So that's the early update from the report. The report recommendation is minded to approve planning provision. This is slightly different from the normal recommendation to approve planning provision because there was a slight flaw in the previous publicity in that the application's clearly a departure from the development plan because it's in a general industrial area where residential uses are not permitted in the unitary development plan. The committee report explains why officers consider that, notwithstanding this, the application should be supported. However, the structural requirement to include some information on the publicity notices effectively just wording to the effect that it's a departure from the development plan. So fresh press notices, fresh press notices and site adverts have been put up, but there's a couple of weeks left to run on them. So it seems unlikely there would be any significant additional representations, given the application's been in for about a year, but being publicised twice previously. If any representations are received, then we would consult the Chair on their contents to see whether referral back to committee was required or not, depending on the substance and number of any further representations received. But officers' recommendation is that it's safe to consider this application based on the publicity done to date, subject to that. So the recommends, I'll just briefly run through the summary and recommendation. So proposals for a major residential development, previously developed land within an area which is transitioning from industry to a wider mix of uses on the edge of Sheffield city centre. Proposal in outline form with all matters reserved, other than demolition. Proposal is contrary to the unitary development plan, which allocates the area for general industry. However, the council is currently unable to demonstrate a four-year supply of deliverable housing sites, with our current supply being approximately three years. And has proposed the site, along with much of the surrounding area of Neeps End, as a priority location for housing growth within the draft new Sheffield plan. It's considered that the benefit of the development in delivering a substantial amount of much-needed new housing in a sustainable location... in a sustainable location outweighs the departure from the unitary development plan in this instance. As the application is outlined for, no detailed development schemes submitted for approval. However, a set of development parameters and design code principles are proposed to guide in constrained future reserve matters submissions. These are parameters, these parameters and principles are generally considered to be appropriate and are supported as they describe an approach to developing the site, which would seek to retain existing heritage of importance, create high quality landscape spaces to anchor the development and deliver a mix of residential, retail, leisure and workspace uses to engender the creation of a new neighbourhood community. The main design concerns in relation to the submission relates to height. The applicant proposing buildings generally ranging between six and eight storeys, but with also a fourteen storey tower. After considering key townscape views and relevant master planning framework principles, officer advised that the location can accommodate this scale of development without unacceptably compromising key cityscape views, subject to high quality design and materiality being proposed at the reserve matters stage, consistent with the proposed design principles, design code principles. In relation to environmental considerations, it's acknowledged that the local environment is affected by relatively high levels of ambient noise and air quality problems. However, these issues are considered to be surmountable, subject to required further assessments and mitigation through design. In relation to travel and accessibility, the applicant proposes to design the development as mainly car free, taking advantage of the new active travel corridor being delivered by the council through the housing zone north scheme and associated parking controls. Subject to relevant controls and enhancements, including new signalized crossings, which will be required as, as part of the conditions before you. Improved bus and tram stops, including a significant improvement in the infirmary road tram stop. On-site pedestrian cycle facilities and robust travel planning measures. It's considered that proposed development is acceptable in relation to traffic and transportation matters and should promote car free city living, consistent with the principles of sustainable development. Other environmental and policy matters are assessed in the report. And overall, it is found that although the proposed element does have some policy conflicts, including in relation to flood risk sequential testing, where officers are not fully satisfied that this control test is passed. However, the strategic flood risk assessment for local plan indicates the release of that land for housing is, is likely to be required to meet housing needs over the planned period. And retail impacts, where officers do consider there is likely to be an impact from the approximately three thousand square metres of use costs, uses associated with the development. However, that impact will be limited and the benefits of providing the new residential community with facilities, leisure, retail, spaces on site and consider to outweigh that impact. And the benefits of development, and it's considered therefore to say that the benefits of the development would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the adverse impacts and assess against the policies in both the UDP, core strategy and national planning policy framework. Consequently, developments proposed to, is considered represents sustainable development is recommended for approval, subject to conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Michael. We have two speakers on this application, both for the application. Scott Mallinson from Capitoline Centric, who's the applicant, and Chloe Parmenta, who's the agent. You have five minutes, Scott.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Scott Mallinson, I work on behalf of Capitoline Centric, one of the development directors looking after the Cannon Brewery site. Following the success of our Eyewitness Works project in Sheffield, which is the repurpose of the former Cutlery Works for build to rent apartments, we're pleased to expand our presence in Sheffield and continue the relationship with the council. The exciting new opportunity of the former Cannon Brewery site is a chance to do something and create something special on a site that deserves investment and attention. An opportunity to breathe new life into a site which has been left and forgotten for over twenty years, a site which is full of character. Our vision is to transform and restore the former Cannon Brewery site in Neeps End into a thriving new neighbourhood while maintaining some historic identity, ensuring the remnants of the old brewery is not forgotten. Unlocking regeneration on a massive scale such as this while creating five hundred and thirty-two homes, which will be built to rent, new workspaces, new spaces for independent shops and cafe bars, whilst attracting new investment, creating spaces for new businesses to establish and thrive. With our funding partners and long-term investment, this allows us to bring this Cannon Brewery site forward, enabling, enabling us to own and operate this long-term and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon all. My name's Chloe Parmenta from Urbana, the agent on the application. We are representing the applicant, Capitoline Centric, who you all know from the Eyewitness Works redevelopment. Capitoline Centric are leading social impact developers and operators, paving the way in creating exceptional communities which are sustainable and environmentally conscious. The application is a hybrid one, which seeks full consent for the demolition of some of the existing buildings on the former brewery site, together with the creation of new buildings which will be beautiful and sustainable to deliver over five hundred homes and new commercial floor space. The scheme also includes provision of new public open space, which this part of the city severely lacks. Specific details of the new build elements are to be determined through a reserve matters application. And we look forward to engaging with the council members and public as to how this comes forward in terms of access, scale, layout, appearance and landscaping. A design code and parameter plans relating to maximum heights and setbacks are sought to be approved as part of this application, which the reserve matters applications will need to accord with. As you know, the site is that of Cannon Brewery, the former home to Stones Bitter. The southern part of the site comprises the former brewery buildings with a large internal courtyard. The northern parcel is mostly open land with derelict warehouse. The buildings identified for retention are the Historic Brew House, Grain Warehouse and Water Tower, which are assessed as being of the most heritage significance and will be brought back into use for new communities to enjoy. The indicative mix which has been used to inform this outline element of the app currently comprises around five hundred and thirty apartments of a mix of one and two, three beds. The specific mix of these will however be a detail secured at the reserve matters stage. In terms of height, the parameter plans which set out in the maximum heights that the reserve matters must sit within show you that building heights generally increase from west to east towards the railway bridge. Most of the site comprises buildings, buildings between five to eight storeys, with one building on the top site closest to the bridge of approximately fourteen. This is a significant reduction from the original submission and reflects the work carried out with officers and the design review panel. The architects also prepared a massing model and viewpoint analysis to justify this height, confirming that maximum parameters will create a strong development, which is not incongruous with the area. The application has received an overwhelming amount of public support, with many parties staying, stating that this site has been crying out for redevelopment for years. Comments were received in relation to accommodation mix, highways and air quality. And it is important to know that we and officers have worked tirelessly to satisfy technical comments in relation to these topics. Importantly, the team has worked with officers on traffic matters in the context of the housing zone north scheme, which provides safe pedestrian and cycling connectivity around the site. The lead local flood authority are also satisfied with all the information submitted and have imposed conditions for further detail. Overall, the development proposals accord with the vision for the area, earmarked in the currently under examination local plan as a housing site and also identified in the priority neighbourhood framework as a Neeps End priority location. This is a catalyst to spearhead the regeneration of this area, acting as an anchor for new communities. The public open space proposed will be visible from perimeters of the development, making it easy to find. The space will be activated by commercial space at the ground floor and will be sheltered by the buildings, making it comfortable and inviting. Pedestrian crossings will be provided around the site to enhance connectivity. The scheme will also involve upgrades to bus stops and travel infrastructure, which will be secured by condition. So in summary, a development to provide, to provide over five hundred and thirty homes in the city, which will significantly contribute to the current shortfall in Sheffield. A development which honours and retains important heritage buildings. A development which provides new public open space and supports and encourages outdoor living. And a development that brings Neeps End to life and provides space for local businesses. I therefore strongly urge you to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Michael, do you want to respond to that now?
No, thanks, Chair.
My best questions. So Gary first.
Yes, thanks, Chair. You put a slide up earlier where it said schools, so many miles away, doctors and dentists and things like that. Is any contributions towards supporting these schools financially from the development? Because, and then another one as well, another question is, how many, how many children do you think we're going to get in this five hundred and thirty development? And how many spaces actually in the schools, how many spaces in the doctors and how many spaces in the dentist? And all the buses running to these schools and dentists and doctors as well? So it's quite a bit there, but it's that in kind of information I need to, to get from you, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of financial contributions, you'll find the relevant part of the report is on page... It's on page one one one. So in determining the level of contribution, infrastructure contributions required, we refer to relevant policies. And these are gone through in that section of the report. Essentially, the development wouldn't meet the thresholds for requirement for education contributions, healthcare contributions or open space contributions, so there's no section six required. And there is provision for traffic infrastructure improvements that are secured by planning condition, including crossings, bus and tram stop improvements. So the, the now, infrastructure of this type, since introduction of the community infrastructure levy, is, can be dealt with through a more centralised means, which is effectively through SIL, which is a tariff on all development to provide new infrastructure based on need. So that section of the report discusses the fact that there is a SIL money potentially available. There is, there is also an infrastructure study as part of a local plan that looks at the level of infrastructure required in that area, broadly finding that school places may be adequate. However, certain other facilities such as healthcare will require investment. So essentially, the long and short of it is there's no policy requirement for the development to contribute any section one six contributions towards infrastructure. And there'd be no reason for refusal on that basis because there's, there's no policy conflict. Infrastructure will have to be dealt, of that type will have to be dealt with through either SIL or other, other investment after, following the growth taking place. So in terms of the number of children, because it's an outline farm, that's unclear at this point. So it can't be anything else because there's no actual housing mix. Obviously, what we typically consider to generate children potentially is two, two and three beds properties. So it would depend on the final mix and the number of two and three bed properties in terms of our estimate, the number of children that be generated. The education service have discussed school places, they've looked at Australia Academy, which has both a primary and secondary intake. And they suggest that currently Australia Academy would have capacity for primary aged children. However, that may change if they implement their plan reduction of intake from sixty places to thirty places. In terms of secondary, there's likely to be a constraint on, on places for secondary school children. In terms of connections, the, there are various bus services that serve various routes in the area. There isn't a direct connection between the site, as far as I'm aware, and all surrounding schools and facilities. But there is, there are various bus routes that you could take. There's also obviously walking and cycling options. So the, there, there are certainly schools within what we would call a walkable distance from, from the site, which were the usual criteria for considering whether a site was suitably connected to those facilities.
Thanks for that. So on the, you've contacted them and it's very limited space and it's full. The doctor surgeries is, you know, have you contacted them, have they come back with any reports on that? You know, and the dentists as well?
They, there is no process for doing that as part of the, the planning application currently. So we, we don't have a needs assessment for healthcare. We have reviewed the number of surgeries and health centres in the area, there are quite a number of them. Obviously, some of them maybe operating at capacity, some of them less capacity. I think that the delivery of that infrastructure is not a policy requirement of the current plan. So it will necessarily have to be reactive. For instance, if there aren't, if there's additional demand generated by this development and existing GP surgeries, healthcare centres are not able to provide for that demand, then there would obviously have to be an expansion of that. However, the development, to state the obvious, will bring in additional revenue through, through council tax etc.
Thanks, Michael, I'll go to comment later, Chair.
Douglas?
Thanks very much. Thanks, very well written report and it's quite clear what's in there. It's a site that borders onto the ward I represent, so very happy to see something happening with this site. Support this, as it's an outline application and obviously there's loads of things to sort out at the detailed stage there. So from the community point of view, then there's going to be, you know, certainly it's welcome that there's going to be something done with this site. Always the issue about the amount of family housing, and I think you put down an indicative breakdown of the size of, the number of one bed, two bed and three bed homes there. In general terms, can you say anything about where we're going with that? We'd definitely like to see more capacity for more family sized housing, so the three beds, because of the risk of making, you know, an enclave of homes just for single people or couples without children. I wonder if there's anything else you can say there, or if, if you have to leave this to the detailed stage?
Thank you, Chair. So broadly speaking, this is a matter of detail because it relates to the, the layout and scale of the development. However, it is an actively ongoing discussion with the, with the applicant. Essentially, officers are encouraged that there is a mix of one, two and three beds, that there isn't a abundance of one beds, there's no studios, for instance, which is, which is very welcomed. However, we would like to see an increase in the number of family, family housing units. So currently, there is a good balance of one and two beds roughly equal split, but only five percent three beds. And I think officers' view is that family housing doesn't necessarily directly equate to three beds. Obviously, it depends on the demographic, the nature of the family, you know, how large the family is, where they are in their, in the maturation of the family, as it were. So I think we'd like this to be evidence driven in terms of what actual family housing needs in the city centre are, what the current offer is and how that offer isn't met. So for instance, we, we would like to see number three bed units increased. I think the degree to which we would like it increased is, is up for debate. Because obviously you could have an unintended consequence. So if you drive up three bed units, you basically drive up the cost of those units because they're larger units that may, that could be less affordable to, to young families, for instance. So I think we would like to see increased number of, of three bed units, but we'd like to see a final housing mix driven by evidence from our strategic housing team, from the evidence the applicants gathered through, through letting Eyewitness Works, which does have some, some three bed units as well, input from our regeneration team. And the signs are currently positive that the applicant is willing to engage in that conversation.
Thanks, that ongoing conversation is really welcome. Can you just clarify the, the open walkways through the site? I just want to check that they're going to be open accessible for all the members of the public to walk through. I think you said that, but just do the confirmation of that. And then just briefly, I just want to touch on the SIL. I just wonder if you can just go over the reason why no SIL is going to be levied on this site? And then putting on the point about, um, as has been mentioned already, there's the need for infrastructure in the area and that's one, um, big issue for the area as a whole, and certainly with a development of this size. If there's any indication of what the non-residential bits of the site might be used for. So obviously, there could well be commercial uses, which bring in commercial rents. But I want to ask about where conversations are going with the scope as to, you know, things like subsidized or no rent options for community groups, um, to, um, maintain that community infrastructure in the area, which is always a bit under pressure.
Thank you, Chair. So the, the, just taking each of the points in turn. So in terms of the open walkways, there would, there's certainly no indication on the plans that there would be any gating of the site. That has actually been directly discussed with the applicant, particularly in terms of the Northern Land Parcel as to whether uh, any private spaces should be provided and the view, the firm view of the applicant and as agreed with by offices, that, is that that there should be no gates and barriers. It should be a space that may be designed to feel private, but shouldn't be active. The other members of the community shouldn't be actively barred from accessing. In terms of the courtyard in the Southern Parcel, you know, the size of the, the openings is, is very large. There'd be no potential to, to, to gate those off. They would be accessible. It'd be essentially be similar to the St Paul's space, uh, behind you, where it's a private space, managed private space, but he's open to the public. It kind of falls in between a public open spacer and a private space. Um, so, so that's the walkways. In terms of SIL, so the way SIL worked when the charging schedule was drawn up was the charges relate to viability. So there's a district wide viability assessment that looked at essentially the costs and the values of developing in every part of the district. And the SIL rate was set accordingly. This is in a SIL area that is zero percent charge, and that is because the viability evidence indicated that charging SIL in this area could make development undeliverable. So that's why it's in the SIL area. However, that's quite different to allocating SIL. So there's no relationship between the viability tested way of charging SIL and the needs based way of allocating SIL. So if SIL is required for a certain project, it's completely irrelevant whether, how many contributions have come from that area for the central part. In terms of infrastructure, so the, um, the developer proposes, uh, approximately up to three, three thousand two hundred square metres of use class E uses. The applicants indicated that about a third of that would be workspace, so essentially kind of co-working type, types, type spaces. Um, in, in keeping with, with the changes in, in working practices, working from home, et cetera. Um, the other use class E uses would be highly likely to be a mixture of, of retail and leisure. There could be anything else that falls into use class E, which, which is very, very broad. There's no requirement in the planning consent for subsidized spaces for community use. I think it would be hard to substantiate that requirement on a policy basis. So that's, that's just the, the answer on that one, unfortunately.
Thanks very much.
Henry?
Well, I'd want to be relieved to know that Douglas has already asked most of my questions.
Sorry.
Uh, one, a very, very quick one. In terms of the assessment, um, I mean, obviously without any 106 and without any SIL and with a big chunk of money coming in from SIMCA, there's quite a lot of effectively, um, public support coming out financially for this. In terms of the impact this is going to have, when you're looking at the, um, impact on schools, was that based on Sheffield's current population in that part of town? Or was it based on Kellam being at maximum capacity and Furnace Hill being full of people as well? Because each of these developments is having an incremental impact on our services without any of them breaking the threshold or anything's being done about it.
Yeah. So that was current forecasting. I don't have the detail of the forecast that the education team used. I believe they look at potential population growth, but also any trends in terms of, uh, obviously, there, there are, any trends in terms of the proportion of children entering each intake. So obviously, it's a more, potentially sometimes a more complex picture than just looking at growth because sometimes demographic, demographic trends can mean that the, the housing growth doesn't result in as much pressure on school places as you'd expect. Obviously, the, the flip side to that is it could potentially look at more. It resulting more if there was a, you know, a baby boom, but that's not the current way the, the demographics are shaking out. So, so essentially, they, they predicted there will be a constraint on school places. So they, they predict Australia Academy could provide for the primary intake, but they are currently looking to have the primary intake because of that demographic effect. That will be reversible. So obviously, there is a potential there for Australia Academy to, 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 to provide for that. In terms of further growth, um, as I say, we have an infrastructure delivery plan that's associated with the Sheffield Plan. And that looks in the round at the housing growth in that area, the education provision and the forecasting of school places into the future. That doesn't raise strong concerns about the level of school place provision, partly based on those demographics, but does suggest that there may be a need for additional school places. There, there's a firmer view that there will be an increase, the need for additional health infrastructure in the infrastructure delivery plan. But essentially, through the plan making process, we'll have to demonstrate that that can be delivered. Also, one of the ways is through the SIL plot, develop the contributions. This development will not contribute to that. We'll be aware of that in the, the plan making process. So we'll have to set aside other means of providing for that infrastructure.
Laura?
Mine's a comment, Chair. Sorry, mine's a comment. I don't know if you want to take it now. Okay, just to build on what we've said previously. This doesn't require contributions to education, recreation or health. The ones in Kellam individually haven't required those contributions. But I'm worried about the cumulative effect. Um, there's very little access to health facilities. I know you said there is some nearby, but, um, my understanding is that they're full, they're overloaded. Um, there's very little green or open space, recreational space in the area. And there is certainly going to demand in schools because I know that, you know, some of the, uh, units in Kellam were mainly for, supposedly for young professionals, but guess what? They have babies and they can't afford to move sometimes. So I just wonder when we're going to get to a stage, particularly with the further developments planned in Neeps End and Furnace Hill, when we stop building housing developments and we build communities? Because that's what we need to do. This isn't just about housing, it's building sustainable communities. And all those things that I've mentioned do need those facilities. Thank you.
Nikki?
Thank you, Chair. Um, first, in the absence of councillor Chaplin, I would like to welcome the inclusion of three SWIFT boxes in every building. For those of you who still remember the committee meeting before last. The thing I wanted to ask, and I'm, it doesn't directly come into this, but it is mentioned. So on slide forty-six, where it talks about the Housing Zone North improvements. Excuse me. Given, so we were, we were obviously there yesterday for the site visit. And there's the, the new extended area of curb at that junction. So I was taken to the road opposite, which I think is, is it Bardwell Road? Which comes down from the north and stood, if you look at slide forty-six, stood where a car that has come down, uh, if it's looking to sort of turn left or right, where it would stop at that junction. And it is a blind corner with the traffic that comes from the west. And given that we're encouraging people who live in this new development to use their bikes, and given that it's on the corner of the skate park as well, where obviously a lot of young people would go, it was quite concerning to stand there. And given that people are currently are using it as a bit of a rat run and speeding through there, it was just quite worrying. I should also, just for complete transparency, say that that was pointed out to me by the manager of the, the skate park, who is also a Labour councillor. But yeah, it, it was a great concern.
Thank you, Chair. My colleague Ellen Johnson might want to add to this, but, um, so essentially, the, the Housing Zone North proposals propose a series of uncontrolled, uh, crossings with tactile paving. So there would be one that would take you from, um, the northern side of Boylan Street across to the site, the area where we had the SUDs, and then there'd be further, uh, uncontrolled crossing across, um, Neeps End Lane. However, the, uh, what's been proposed in the conditions before you would be actually for the developer to be responsible for delivering a series of controlled crossings. They would be more kind of on the, on the eastern side to connect the site to, to Australia Academy, et cetera. Uh, but there's also a requirement to look at crossings on, um, on Neeps End Line. So I guess the reassurance and, and the requirement to provide road safety audits to back that up. So, so, so essentially, the reassurance I provide, provide you would be that we, the developer will be required to provide additional crossings. They'll be required to undertake a road, road safety audit process, and there's the potential to pick up any safety issues such as the particular one you just raised, uh, through that. I mean, I'm sure it's been looked at through the Housing Zone North scheme as well.
Yes, thanks. I, I mean, I haven't really got an awful lot to add to what Michael said, other than, you know, we have got these additional crossings in there. But what I would also say as well is that in terms of the Housing Zone North Plan, there were, there is a road safety audit process to go through that, and that there's actually four stages of the road safety audit. So there's the preliminary audit before you, you know, when you've just got more or less a sketch plan, through to when it's actually being constructed, which is a stage three road safety audit. So any, any issues, this is sort of talking aside from this development really, but any issues with that will be picked up in that process as well. Thanks, Chair.
Mark?
Um, I would imagine ninety-nine percent of us in this room have cars, but we're asking the people who move into this housing development not to have cars. Uh, I initially thought that that would mean it would only be young, first time buyers. But looking at the variety of housing on offer, it seems to be that there is going to be space for families, and we've talked about the schools and stuff like that. So how, I mean, how confident are we on the viability of people moving in and not using, not owning cars, not, I mean, not necessarily just driving around the town, but having a car to visit their family in Wakefield? Does this reflect other road usage in the area?
Chair, I think, so, so for, the, the example set in Kellam is is, is some, some of the developments have been car free. Some of them have some level of, of parking, be it undercroft or, or what have you. There have been some frictions, obviously, with that. Some people would like to own a car, however, they live in a development that doesn't provide for a car. I would say essentially, we wouldn't be asking residents not to have a car. We'd be allowing a developer to come forward that doesn't cater for a resident to have a car. Obviously, it's up to a person whether they want to live in that development. The developers are confident that there would be, uh, people who would be happy to live in this location without a car. The reality is, because they'd be very limited on, off-street parking provided, only about thirty spaces, which would be primarily accessible spaces. There'll be very little potential for you to own a car because there'd be a parking control zone in, in the surrounding area unless you're happy to leave your car very remote from the site. So, I mean, I would say that it is a model that can work. It works in many European cities. Less common in, in, in Britain, but it's, you know, many city centres do, and surrounding areas do have car free developments. So it's not asking a development to do something that's untried and tested or unknown. I mean, it's, it's a relatively fringe location without the, without the Housing Zone North connection. I think we would be very sceptical about a predominantly car free development. But the whole point of the Housing Zone North connection was to enable this type of development, kind of a progressive development where we're reducing the predominance of the car, trying to engender sustainable cities that, 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 where people are able to access facilities and services without the need to travel. So essentially, the long and short of what I'm saying is that we wouldn't be requiring people not to have a car. We would be providing a development that doesn't really allow for that. I think the risk is fairly nominal because of the parking control zones, et cetera. Obviously, some residents may be frustrated they can't have a car, but then they'll be fully aware of that when, when they move into the development.
Make it quick.
Well, when I did my question, Chair, I didn't say I want to come back as a comment. I thought I might have talked over.
Go ahead, Chair.
Go ahead. I'll go on with you then, Chair. Thank you. Yeah, it's, um, it's a shame where we are because, uh, we're desperate for, uh, housing in this city. And it's, uh, five hundred and thirty is, uh, is welcome. Yeah, I think we have to look closely at, uh, parking, uh, and, uh, where we're going to put cars and things in the future, but that's not, I think, as I said, we've got to discuss what's on the application in front of us. And rightly so, but I do think from here, uh, we need to send this somewhere to one of the committees, uh, Chair. Because it's, um, you know, we just can't keep getting application, application, application coming in. Where hiring my doctors up in Mike's, in a fortnight's time, face to face, although give me a reach notice and say, we're going to call you on eleven o'clock and, and that. We're putting pressure on the, wherever a society, wherever it is in that area, uh, schools, hospitals, whatever. You know, so we need to get something changed somewhere, Chair. That's what I'm saying. So it's a committee. I think it's got to. I'm looking at Douglas because he's, uh,
I don't mean.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Chair.
Chair, can I just come in briefly on that, please? Chair, sorry. Thank you. I think we're all aware of the sort of, the restraints on us as, as, as planning officers to, to seek contributions. And I would just want to remind everybody that in the, uh, draft plan that's currently under examination, if all goes well, policy DC one, uh, which relates to, uh, SIL and other developer contributions, uh, will require developers of housing schemes comprising of ten or more new houses or homes to contribute towards education, health and open space where needs are not met through SIL. So it is something that's in the pipeline, um, but we are dependent on that sort of policy being, or the new plan being, um, acceptable. Thanks.
Richard?
Well, you've just completely robbed me of my point. But I'm welcome to hear that, so thank you very much. I mean, you're absolutely spot on, councillor Moynihan. You know, this individual, I won't repeat, this individual Lego brick approach. Um, because actually, it's a wonderful development. But the devil's in the detail. If you look at page one one one, reading between the lines, there clearly is going to be issues on education spaces. And there's going to be issues with health spaces. Just coming back to, uh, condition thirty-six, which covers off cycle parking and storage facilities. It, it's quite, so it's quite detailed in the criteria it's using, talking about long and short stays, parking for staff, visitors. It might be detailed for the, the final application going forward, but it would be nice to log the need for electric bike charging. That would be, I think it should come in as soon as we can because the basis of this is people are going to either walk, take public transport, if there is any, and hopefully cycle. And as we know, Sheffield, this part of Sheffield is flat, but a lot of Sheffield isn't. And electric bikes, they are expensive, but they are becoming more popular. But you do need to charge them, and you wouldn't want to go drag your bike up to the eighth floor to charge it. That's quite, so thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, Chair. So the, uh, the condition thirty-six refers to LTN one twenty, which is a governmental standard, also information sheet four, which basically says they need at least one bike per unit. You're right to say it doesn't deal with electric bike charging. It would be perfectly possible, uh, to amend condition thirty-three, sorry, sorry, thirty-six, just to insert the words, uh, and electric bicycle charging at the end of where it says cycle infrastructure design. I mean, this is something that would be dealt within the detailed scheme. But there's never any harm in just flagging up that as a requirement to, so my, that, that would be within the gift of councillors to, to insert that into the, into the condition.
Can I propose that then, please, Chair?
Can I propose that then, please, Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just, yeah, it would be proposed second and then noted on. Thank you.
Chair, we shall hand it over to you on that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I think this is a very welcome contribution to what we're having done. It fits in nicely as well, I think, with Kellam Island and that development around there. I would, of course, echo what other people have said about the infrastructure, you know, schools and doctor surgeries and places like that. I also, I also would like to just raise the point of, not for an answer, obviously, because I know the answer, but raise the point of affordable housing as well. You know, this is something that comes to every committee, every planning committee we have. The issue of housing comes up and affordable housing seems to get lost in the ether. So that's just something for consideration for later. But I welcome this. I think it's a fantastic way of bringing this area back into use. And as I said, it would fit nicely in with the rest of the Kellam Island development. Thank you, Chair.
Any more comments? No? Can we move to the vote then, please? Tony?
Four, Chair.
Laura?
Four, Chair.
Meg?
Four, Chair.
Mark?
Excellent development. I'm for it. Thank you.
Nikki?
Four, Chair.
Mia?
Four, Chair.
Larry?
Four, Chair, but I can't wait for the new plan to come. Yes, four.
Henry?
Four.
Ladies?
Four, Chair.
Liz?
Four, Chair.
Richard?
Yeah, four, Chair.
We now move to item nine, recorded planning appeals submission and decision. I'm looking at. No?
Nothing to add to it.
Shall we note it? Thank you. That's noted. Date and time of next meeting is the 20th of August, 2024, 2pm. Thank you very much, everybody.